Hello, my name is Mark O'Keefe. I'm Executive Editor for HeraldStandard.com. I want to welcome you to our HeraldStandard.com Editorial Board Meeting with candidates for the Albert Gallatin School District in the November 8th general elections. Candidates will have three minutes to give opening and closing statements and two minutes to answer questions from members of the HeraldStandard.com Editorial Board. There are six candidates running in this election for five four-year seats. Jeff Myers is running on both Democratic and Republican. Edward Colbank, both Democratic and Republican. Janet Swainy and David Hyatt also running on Democratic and Republican. And Michael Dunham is running as Republican. And John Kupas is running on the Democratic ticket. And with us tonight are Jeff Myers, Edward Colbank, and Michael Dunham. So we'll start off, we'll go in alphabetical order. And I believe that's you, Mr. Colbank.
Hello, my name's Ed Colbank. I've been on the Albert Gallatin School Board for the past 14 years. I also have served on the Fayette County Votec Board for 11 years. I am a life resident of the school district. I went to school in the Albert Gallatin. I have two sons. One is a, was the principal at Uniontown. I was in the federal coordinator in Uniontown High School. My second son is at Still Valley School District. And he is also central staff in electronics or technology, information, discipline, and other things like that. I have five grandchildren, four in the school district. One is in kindergarten, two is in the junior, three is in the junior high, and one is at the high school. That's basically my information to begin with if you want anything else.
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dunham?
My name's Michael Dunham. I'm a lifelong resident, school district graduate of Fair Chance, Georgia's high school. I am presently President of the Albert Gallatin Board. This completes my first four-year term. I was previously on the board for two additional years. I'm a retired teacher having spent 36 years in education in the Uniontown School District. I'm on the board and running again for the board because I've spent a lifetime in education. I think that I have some things that I can add to the district to help us meet the goals that we're working for in trying to educate each child that is in the schools of the Albert Gallatin Area School District to the best that we possibly can, given the constraints that the governor has placed upon us. I'm married, I have three sons, I have three grandchildren, one that is presently in kindergarten in Friendship Hill.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Myers?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Myers. I too have been a lifelong resident of the Albert Gallatin Area School District. I was born and raised in Spring Hill Township. Graduate of Albert Gallatin Area Senior High School. I'm married to the former Christina Romito from Lamberton, that's in German Township. I have two children. One graduated last year from Albert Gallatin Senior Highs attending Penn State University. And my youngest one is an 11th grade student at Albert Gallatin Senior High School at the present time. My affiliation with the Albert Gallatin School District is I basically have coached on and off since 1979 with the school district. I have did a lot of community activities, whether it be baseball, church. I have been very actively involved in the community. I'm a retiree of 2009 from the Federal Justice Department, Federal Bureau of Prisons. In that capacity, I have had numerous occasions to negotiate policy, to actually write policy. And I do believe that with my labor management background, sitting on the National Labor Council, that I too could possibly benefit the Albert Gallatin Area School Board. That's all I have at the time, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, first question, we'll start with Mr. Dunham. Under the current evaluation system, 99.94% of all teachers and 99.2% of all principals across the state received satisfactory ratings last year. The Corbett administration is looking at making changes to the evaluation system, including multiple measures of student achievement, which isn't factored into the ratings now. And there would be more categories other than the satisfactory or unsatisfactory ratings being used now. Do you think the proposed changes in the evaluation system would be good or bad? And are there any changes you would like to see in the evaluation system?
I think it's really too early to make a definitive decision on whether what the governor is proposing is good or not. It would be difficult, however, not to make some improvements because the present system is lacking in a number of areas. It really doesn't take a rocket scientist to say that the percentages that you just mentioned are quite frankly, very, very difficult to believe that 100% of any profession can be doing a satisfactory job. It doesn't matter whether we're talking about coal miners, or people in the medical field, or people in the education field. Is there anything else?
No, I'd say if that's, do you have any specific changes you would see?
Well, the governor, as what I understand, wants to include performances. I don't have a problem with that. It would depend how much weight the governor would want to place on that. Because quite frankly, we deal with the students that are registered and that attend our school district. It may therefore be unfair for one employee based on outstanding performance, depending on the type of students that they have versus the type of students that perhaps another employee has. So I would, I would really, really want to look at the weight that the performance factor would carry in the evaluation.
One of the things that, I guess there was approximately 100 school districts across the state that were involved in the pilot program, but none of the Fayette County School Districts or Greene or Washington, I believe, were involved. I think Belvernum was the only one that was somewhat in Fayette County. Was there a reason for that, do you know? Were you, was the Albert Gallatin School District, were you approached on this at all? Or do you remember anybody saying anything?
I personally don't, don't remember the board being made aware specifically of an opportunity to participate in that. I don't know. Ed, do you, I don't remember.
I don't think we've ever been asked or whatever.
Yeah.
We're basically down here in a corner. And Greene County and Fayette County is pretty well isolated if you look at what the economics and everything is from the other part of the state. And that's, I think it has a lot to do with it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Myers, you want to take a crack there?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. I really concur with what Mr. Dunham basically was saying as well. The performance issue is always a, that's a diffy thing for the simple reason is that is very opinionated depending on what building you're in, what you're teaching, your, actually your demographic area is, has a lot to do with your performance. I think that it would have to be more defined if they're going to actually go in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Colbank?
Well, basically, change is good. And anytime you make change, there's a need to do things. But we need to make sure that we have a paper trail. Because when we do things, we have to back up. Because if we don't, then we have problems later on if we have a poor teacher. And we need to do this. But this program here will be okay. You said over 100 school districts that have, has already done it.
Well, they're involved in a pilot program.
In a pilot program.
So that's what they're, I guess, kind of gathering input or whatever.
People have to be trained on what to do in this new program. And the child has a lot to do, the economics of the children and everything. A lot of, a lot of the school districts have a hard time because of low economics and things. And a teacher sometimes has his hands tied on doing things because of this. Where if you go out in the eastern part of the state, those individuals have, are at a greater advantage than the ones in this area. So I agree that it will work to a degree, but it has to work out the bugs and things.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Bill, you want to take the second question there?
Certainly, just an aside, I've done some work in your district with teaching kids about money, financial education. I'm so familiar with your percentage of free and reduced lunch. Some school districts have suggested that school boards in Fayette and Greene Counties discuss the possibility of joining together and bringing a lawsuit against the state in hopes of recouping some of the education funding that has been cut. Directors are organizing a county-wide school directors meeting to further discuss the issue and then have stated that no taxpayer dollars can be spent on a lawsuit before and against sets of a lawsuit, and why.
We'll start with Mr. Myers.
Mr. Myers, go ahead.
I would say I would be probably for the lawsuit. Due to budgetary restraints, it was my understanding that a lot of schools in the area are actually going on a class action lawsuit against Governor Corbett's budgetary recommendations. I do know that New Jersey had great success in doing this. They actually recouped back, actually, they asked for $1 billion to be put back into the fund. And Supreme Court thereby voted three to two. And New York, New Jersey basically told them that they had to put back $500,000. And Governor Christie, although he disagreed with the Supreme Court's ruling, he actually by July of the past year put back $850,000, $850 million, I'm sorry, into the fund. So basically, I totally am for going after it. You're in a basically no lose situation with it.
Okay. Mr. Colbank?
This was brought up at the tech school. Mr. Dunham and I are on the tech school. And New Jersey did file a lawsuit. And our law school laws are very similar in Pennsylvania. And we agreed in Fayette County, I think, at the tech board to do this. I think that the cut of the money has hurt the children in the area. We've had to do a lot of soul searching and cutting because of what has been done. And yes, I agree that we need to file a lawsuit as a group. And we're hoping that maybe the Pennsylvania Board of Education will come in on this if they're allowed to spend that money to help with this class lawsuit. Because I'm looking for the Greene County, I'm looking for Fayette County, and also Washington County to come in and make us a lawsuit that the governor has to reinstate some money or change the view on how the money is done for next year.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dunham?
I certainly don't have any objections to a lawsuit being pursued to help increase the funding. My only concern is that we're looking at perhaps years for anything to come out of the judicial, the judicial system. If anyone would file a lawsuit, just a personal lawsuit today, it would take years, perhaps six or eight years, to make it through the system and for a settlement to be reached. What happens to the children in our classroom in this four, five, six, seven-year period of time, whatever the amount of time is? What, what happens to the education that takes place? In Albert Gallatin, we've had to eliminate classrooms. We've had to, in the primary classes, and we tried, the administration worked diligently to try to keep from doing this. We've had to increase class sizes in third grade. We're trying to keep kindergarten, first, second, and third grade classes as small as we can because of the emphasis that's placed on reading in the curriculum in the lower grades. So the lawsuit to get the funding increased and to recuperate the funding that we've lost is fun. But again, I'm concerned that it's just going to take too long and damages to students' education is something that quite frankly, you can't recuperate from. And the governor tried to solve spending problems all in one year. And the children in classrooms across the Commonwealth are the ones that are suffering. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Pete, you want to take the third question?
Given the state budget system, what changes do you envision for the district? If cuts have to be made, what do you think should be cut first?
Mr. Colbank?
Well, we had a surplus this year and we had a cut. The only thing that can be cut to reduce cost is teacher personnel. If that happens, that increases your student ratio. And like Mr. Dunham said, we tried our best to do it. We've cut out busing to save money. We've combined sports together. So we did all the cuts this year. Next year is going to be a tougher year for, for the school boards in all the counties if the governor does not increase money. Because now we got to bite the bullet, start making cuts that's necessary. What can the state do is increase the proportions? And I think they're around 36%, 49% also in the special ed areas. It's a high ratio and they're not getting a fair reimbursement there. So basically, is look to see who you vote to get in and let regular people run for state registry because of the future. Because education is hurting, is going to continue to hurt. And the scores that we have gained on the PSSA, and the teachers are trying hard, they're going to go down if they don't reduce the number of students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunham?
You start first and you look at the funding formula that dictates how much money the districts get from Harrisburg. We presently, in the Commonwealth, get approximately 35% of our money from, from Harrisburg. Nationwide, the percentage is somewhere closer to 45%. So right away, we're looking at, give or take a percentage point, we're looking at a 10% cut when you compare the funding that the school districts in the Commonwealth get as compared to what school districts in other states get. If this continues to be a problem, I'm in favor of cutting as many non-educational programs and activities as necessary. This is extremely unpopular. It really is. And I don't think that there's anyone that would do that with a smile on their face and with a sense of accomplishment. The problem is, the state looks at test scores for every student in the Commonwealth. We need, as school directors, to do the best job that we can do to provide the best education to the students. So we need to make sure that if we have to cut, we cut academic programs last. We cut tutoring programs. We've, we've had to cut tutoring programs and you eliminate special teachers that provide the extra encouragement, the extra boost to students that are at need. We need to try to look at building a fence around the academic areas and, quite frankly, try to avoid from increasing classrooms size and look at other areas that are non-academic areas.
Sports would be one of those?
That's, that's a non-academic area. We're not, and this is, this is what I mean when I say that it's not, it's not popular. But the state doesn't check our sports programs, how well we win, how well we compete, but they check our scores in reading and math. And again, we've, we've done that this year by combining some of the sports programs in the middle school. Instead of, we've, we've eliminated sports in two separate middle schools and combined those, those sports as a way to save money. We're still providing those sports activities. And, and sports are important for kids. All three of my sons were, were involved with extracurricular activities. And whenever they think about their school activities and memories, they think about the football, they think about the band, they, they think about those activities that they were involved in. So whenever I say that, that it's a tough decision, it's a tough decision because extracurricular activities are an important part of school. But the position that the governor's put us in is, is really not, not a good, not a good position. It really isn't.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Myers?
These two gentlemen here are a lot more schooled in this particular topic than I would be, since serving on the board like they'd have. I certainly agree with Mr. Dunham. There, you were, you send a child to go to school to learn, to get, to be educated. And that is our duty as a school district to educate children. Whatever means necessary, basically make it work. If it's not an educational program, if it comes down to it, like Mr. Dunham says, it would be very unpopular for a lot of people. Myself, being a past coach for as long as I was, I can certainly empathize with a lot of people. But when it all is said and done, you're there to educate children. A lot of the things too, with the district that you incur costs in, students with disabilities, that's the thing that most people never look at. And in our district, we have approximately 19% of our children receive some form of special education services. You can't do these all with regular teachers. A lot of these students require state-certified entities coming in and offering the service. As a district, you pick up the cost on those as well. So then whenever the public just looks at a school district, they say, well, you know, I don't want them to cut football, I don't want them to cut band or whatever else. You have to be, look at the total picture and be very creative in the cuts that you are initiating to make. Because there is so many entities out there that the average person has no idea that the school district is paying for. But I certainly agree, by all means, that we are there to educate the kids and that's what has to come first. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jerome, you want to take the fourth question there?
Sure. Most Fayette and Greene County school districts give the public an opportunity to speak to directors at the end of the meetings after motions have passed or failed. While the Albert Gallatin Board only permits a public forum at the beginning of the meeting. Do you find it important that taxpayers have ample opportunity to address directors? And would you be opposed to allowing more time for the public to address the board?
I'll start with Mr. Dunham.
Albert Gallatin provides a public forum opportunity at the beginning of every meeting. Rarely, and I'm sorry to say this, do we have members of the public that are there to express concerns. I will get phone calls with a concerned taxpayer asking a question, expressing a concern about an action or an activity that the board has done, but rarely. And when I say rarely, we may go six or eight months without public comment from, from the public at the public forum. We have, speaking for myself, no, no problem with the public expressing concerns, asking questions. Quite frankly, many, many times, it makes our job easier because they bring to our attention perhaps problems or concerns that we're not aware of. Personally, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with adding that at the end. However, I don't really see a need for it because of the fact that we have very, very few people taking advantage of the present setup. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Myers?
It is of my opinion, and only my opinion, that I believe if elected as a director for the Albert Gallatin Area School Board, it is my intention to visit on a regular basis, schools in the area. I would actually, instead of waiting to possibly hear possible problems and concerns that might be brought to a meeting, I actually would like to be a little bit more proactive than that and actually go and find out for myself firsthand if there may be a problem. I certainly, if permitted to be on the board, would not have a problem before, during, after any kind of a public forum, let them ask any questions. The people has elected all of these gentlemen here and hopefully myself onto this board and is their right to know and ask the questions as they see fit. That is of my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Colbank?
First of all, to be corrected, there is always, not always asked, but at the end of the meeting, we ask if there's anybody who would like to speak. So there is, two times. Second of all, is that as a board member, our job is a lot easier because the people under us, central staff, the principals, and the teachers are doing their job. So if there is a problem, they try to settle the problem before it blows up to be a major problem. So we don't get too many people come in and complaining because the people in central office, the principals, and the teachers are trying to settle the problem as quick as possible and have the agreement between the two. Now, if some people don't agree, they don't agree, then yes, come to the board or call us. As a school board member, I visit all the schools, I try to be involved as much as I don't foresee any changes in what we have right now. Because if you're, if you want to come to the school or the school board meeting and complain, all you do is call and they'll give you. Now, set times, a limit, we have a set time of three to six minutes, but they let them carry over if the issue is very, very important to the people there. But in the past 14 years, we've been able to settle the problems before they came But in the past 14 years, we've been able to settle the problems before they came before the board. And that's the job of the people that work in the education field at Albert Gallatin, to settle those problems before they blow up in your face and make it a major issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll take the fifth, and this will be the final question. The Albert Gallatin School District's enrollment has declined about 17% over the last five years, dropping from 3,886 to 3,296. Are you concerned about this decline? And what should the school district be doing to deal with it? We'll start with Mr. Myers.
Personally, I'm, people move in and out of the district all the time. I certainly have no great worries of people leaving the district. Like as I said before, there are really, Albert Gallatin School District is a good, solid district. They have a very good, solid foundation. They offer a children a quality education if the child chooses to pursue that education. I don't know how much more proactive a district can be than possibly maybe they are trying to do right now. I don't know the reason why they're leaving. I don't know if it's the lack of jobs. I don't, I cannot see that it's all for to receive a better education. That is a little bit of an alarming rate, but like, as I said, I'm not, I was not familiar that there was that much of a decrease over the, you know, the last few years. I really don't have anything else on that.
Okay. Mr. Cobain?
The key issue is jobs, jobs, jobs. If people have jobs here and can work, the students in the area is going to increase. But we have a very good school district, it's very solid. We've been recognized as blue schools and a lot of our different things, but it still comes down to economics. If the individuals in this area don't have a job, they'll move out, such as the school board at Fayette County. There was a business from Texas that came in here for the gas wells, and they had to leave and go back to Texas because of two things. They couldn't find skilled people, the individuals on drugs, they couldn't pass a drug test. We don't have, we have a tech school out there, and our kids go there. We had to close down the air conditioning class because the kids will not come out. But there's jobs there. We're pushing, we're pushing our students to go to the tech school. That's the future. 61% of the jobs are going to be non-college people. You need a trade, and they're getting paid just as much as a college graduate. But Albert Gallatin, to match anybody, they can compete academically with anyone. The decline in Albert Gallatin, you check the other school districts, their declines is also the same. Where did the coal miners go? They went to the south, they went to the west. This area now is because of the gas wells. Maybe the jobs will come back in the area, but the key is jobs. If you have jobs, your taxes increase, the students will come. And we're proud of our school district. The teachers do a very, very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Dunham?
The decrease in enrollment in Albert Gallatin, percentages may be a little bit different, but the decrease in enrollment is no different than the enrollment that's occurring across Fayette County and, quite frankly, across the Commonwealth. Pennsylvania is a, quote, "an old state." Census data will tell us that there are a great number of senior citizens that reside in Pennsylvania. The number of families with children are not what they used to be. So the decrease in enrollment in Albert Gallatin is just a mirror of the decrease in enrollment that's occurring across Fayette County and, quite frankly, across the Commonwealth. I personally think that that will change with the completion of Route 43 from Morgantown. I think that Albert Gallatin School District will benefit more than any other district in the county because of the completion of Route 43, primarily because of our location, close proximity to Morgantown. You let people be able to get to their job in 10 minutes, and that's what 43 affords them to do from the Albert Gallatin Area School District to Morgantown. I think our district will see development. I think our district will see an increase in enrollment. Will it ever get back to where it used to be? I doubt that. Families of six and eight kids are not happening today as where they did in the past. You're going to have families of one or two children. So the enrollment dropping is not a reflection in any way on Albert Gallatin. It is just, I think, a mirror of society.
Do you think that with a decline, I mean, is that, you think that the school district maybe going ahead or something will result in any changes or anything? Or do you see any changes? Or have you seen any changes over the past, maybe 10 years since the numbers have started to go down at all? Or is it, or are your costs pretty much, or are your costs pretty much fixed? Or is there maybe a way where, you know, you don't have as many teachers as you used to?
Technologies has come in, I mean, you're up there, but our technology program has advanced so much that there's things that we could not provide before, that the computers and the, that we get over the, what's that called? MS program and everything that precise for some of that. Our children coming out of the school are probably just as well-educated as they were 25 years ago. And the teachers coming into the school district are more prepared with this new technologies than the ones that we have. Because like I told you before, I'm from old school and a lot of the teachers from old school, and it's hard to change. And most of them have changed. And I'll shut up because the question was directed.
Well, it was kind of an open question. I mean, about, I know, you know, you guys have been on the board for a while, but I think that's something that everybody's going to have to maybe think about.
We have fewer, part of your question was concerning the number of staff members.
Yeah. Is that going to result in fewer teachers down the road?
Sure. It has. It has. And considering how deep the budget cuts from Harrisburg, that, quite frankly, is where we can save the most money, is by cutting staff. That also is one of the ways, or the first way, that has an effect on the education that takes place in the classroom.
We're shooting ourselves in the foot when we do that.
If you have 18 students in kindergarten, or if you have 28 students in kindergarten, you're going to affect the quality of the education that takes place in that room, and you can have the same teacher there. It really is common sense. There is 60 minutes in an hour. You can get to more students if you have 18 versus the fact that if you have 28. Not saying that a teacher can't do that, but the quality isn't going to be there.
Another big issue is that, and I might go elaborate, but cyber school is hurting all school districts. And basically, we have to take money from our fund that comes to us to give it to the children that are in it. We've spent over a million dollars a year on children that are in cyber school. And the playing field is not level. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'll say some more on that, if you don't mind. May I follow up on that? Quite frankly, I think that this is the quickest way that school districts in Fayette County. It's going to work across the Commonwealth, but let's talk about the school districts in Fayette County, can see less of a financial hit. If we look at, okay, cyber school, we can educate a student in cyber school for approximately $4,300. We are charged, if a student leaves our district and goes to a cyber school, we're charged approximately $8,500. If a student has an IEP, that figure can jump to $18,000 plus dollars. Now, I would like to tell our state legislators, pass a law that says if a district has a cyber school program, those students in that district must attend the district's cyber school program. We can control cost, we can level the playing field. Right now, we have students from Albert Gallatin that go to cyber school, and we have no control of the curriculum. We have no control on what is actually done in those cyber school settings. But yet, it is costing us twice the amount that we can do that for. The state doesn't hold them accountable. You see the advertisements in August, July and August, "Send your child to this cyber school, send your child to that cyber school." Well, they're advertising with the taxpayers' money. And that taxpayers' money comes from the education that could be taking place in every school district in Fayette County. Mr. Cobain used the figure a million dollars. That's what he costs Albert Gallatin School District every year, okay, to educate cyber school kids. If you look at every district in Fayette County, you're going to come up with similar figures. It's costing, I would think conservatively, $5 million, okay? That's coming out of the pockets of the taxpayers in Fayette County, and it's being shipped to wherever these cyber schools exist. And there are no requirements. The state comes into Albert Gallatin, and it comes into every district in the Commonwealth, and they check test scores of every student. They don't check test scores, okay, for kids that go to cyber school. We have students that will leave the physical setting of the Albert Gallatin Area School District and go to cyber school and come back with 45 days left in the year so they can graduate and get an Albert Gallatin diploma. We have, we have nothing to do, okay, with that. If the state legislators would pass a law, and quite frankly, this, you're going to save more money this way, and you're going to get the money recuperated much more rapidly than going through the court systems and trying to sue the governor and telling him that his funding ratio is unfair. It is, but it's going to take years to do that. If the state legislature would simply enact a law that says, "Students in Albert Gallatin that want to go to cyber school must attend the district's cyber school." Okay? Fine, we don't have a problem with that. It just gives us some controls, we can do it at half the cost, and we can still give them what their parents want, and that's a cyber school education.
If they do it under Albert Gallatin guidelines, you can govern what's going on with the cyber school. The way it is right now, they really aren't accountable to anyone.
That's the only big issue. I have a ten, Mr. Dunham has tened to the, we have lawmakers and educators going to California, and the main question come up was cyber school. And what can be done? And the legislators, they don't know what to do. And that needs to be addressed, because there's a lot of money throughout the state that's gone to cyber school. If we had that million dollars at Albert Gallatin, we could do a lot of the things. We might not even have to do cuts.
You wouldn't have the deficit if that was the case. Nor would any other school district.
I would like to see an article, if you want to investigate, how much is paid by each school district on cyber schools.
And you see, that money will increase because more and more students over the next five years or 10 years, whatever period of time, are going to go to cyber schools as it becomes more and more popular. Because, off the record, kids like cyber school because they don't have to get up in the morning and wait at the bus stop. Okay, that's off the top. So you're going to see, if we have, and I don't know what our numbers are, I want to say 90, but I'm not sure. If we have 90 students at Albert Gallatin that go to cyber school, wherever they go, that number's going to increase in the next five years, in the next six. And so as that number increases, the hit that we take and the drainage from our budget is going to hurt. If there's a law enacted that says they must go to the cyber school within the district, then it doesn't matter how many students go, the money stays in the district. And we have some oversight. We can tell if a kid's logging on to the computer and if the student is doing the curriculum that he needs to do in order to satisfactorily complete what the graduation requirements are. Now, we don't have any, we don't have any choice in that matter.
We have some, because some kids do come back and graduate, like you said.
Yeah, but the ones that leave, I mean.
Basically, and the problems from cyber school is that there's other factors that come in to why the children don't want to come to school.
I've been in the public school system now for the last three years, and on numerous occasions, I've seen when a child perhaps gets into some form of disciplinary action or something like that, automatically, within the next week, he's being cyber schooled. Wherever they want to go, and that's what needs to be stopped.
All I'm asking is, let's have a level plan filled for all the school districts and cyber schools, anything. It isn't going to change right away, but.
See, parents will still have freedom of choice. This is a big thing that the governor is espousing, is that there be parental choice. Well, parents are going to have a choice of sending their children to cyber school if they so choose. The only thing is, if they choose to send them to an outside cyber school, local school districts shouldn't be responsible for that, because we're already providing that service. Parents have the choice of doing, quote, "the regular education," doing the cyber school that the district provides at no cost, or if they choose to select another cyber school program, then they certainly have that choice, but the taxpayers of the Albert Gallatin Area School District shouldn't be required to pay for that. Nor should, nor should any taxpayer in Fayette County be required to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, well, now we'll get into.
We feel rather strongly about that, as you can tell.
You make some, you make some very, very good points, yeah. Definitely something for people to think about, and that's what the whole purpose of this editorial board meeting with the candidates is. Okay, well, that'll conclude our question part, so we'll get into the closing statements. You'll have three minutes each to make a closing statement. You could expound upon something, or, you know, something that we talked about or didn't talk about, whatever, the three minutes is yours. And we'll start with Mr. Cobain.
I'm just going to read what I've written down. It is my belief that I- It is my belief that I have the knowledge and experience education to continue to be a school director. I've worked with youth my entire career and served on many education committees for Fayette County and the district. I'm familiar with many issues in education and will do my best for the residents and the school district. I support and promote the Albert Gallatin students and staff. I attend and participate in many school activities. I'm proud of the remodeling improvement that we've had in the school district facilities and curriculum. Education is very important to a child. Once knowledge is learned, it cannot be taken away. I continue, I'm committed to public education and pledge to work for the taxpayers, the students, parents, and educators to make our school district safe and financially sound so that each child in the Albert Gallatin School District can have the opportunity to obtain the best education possible. And this statement is a statement I ran on four years ago and has not changed. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dunham?
I have been very, very honored, and it's been a privilege to, to be on the Albert Gallatin Area School Board. I tell my wife that I enjoy serving on the board, and she looks at me sometimes as if she's not sure, you know, if I'm all there or not. I've spent my entire life in education. I enjoyed what I did. I enjoy being on the board. Working with Mr. Cobank and the, and the other people that are on the board has been a real experience that has added to my life. Albert Gallatin isn't the best school district in the Commonwealth, but we have made dramatic improvements from 20 years ago. And those improvements, okay, are a credit to the board members that have been on the board in the past, the board members that, okay, have been there for a period of time, such as, such as Mr. Cobank and some of the other board members. I'm glad that I'm part of the board. I'm glad that I've had an opportunity to, quite frankly, help make what we think is one of the best school districts in the county. We've done it until this year, thanks to Governor Corbett, without raising taxes. The buildings in the Albert Gallatin Area School District have been remodeled. We have a couple of new buildings. All of that has been done without, okay, significant tax increases for the Albert Gallatin Area School District. Test scores, which the state values very highly, have increased. Are we where we need to be? No. But we're working for that goal. Again, I thank the, the taxpayers of the Albert Gallatin Area School District for giving me the opportunity to be on board, and I would ask for your vote this coming election. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mars?
As I stated before, this is my first attempt at seeking public office. I am running on the agenda, basically, that I have no set agendas. As I said before, I have lived in this district my whole life, and it is my belief that as people get older and have things to offer, that it's time to give back to their communities. I, I firmly believe that the Albert Gallatin School District has the potential to lead all other districts in this area. There's good people on the board, there's good administrators, there are excellent teachers that looks for the best interest of the children. As a public school, you accept all students. In most cases, the school time that they're in school is the only bright spot in some of these children's lives. You know, you're not only teaching this child arithmetic, you're teaching this child about life. And, you know, through diligent work and through communication, through tightening your belts and doing what needs to be done, Albert Gallatin can offer this to every child in that district. And it's what I'm striving to do. My platform is I'm running for the children. I want to make this a better place for them to go to school. I would appreciate your support. As I said, this is the first time I'm running, and that's really all I have, and I thank you.
Okay, I want to thank the candidates for coming in tonight to meet with the Herald Standard dot com editorial board and to share your views with, with our viewers out there. And I want to thank you out there for watching. We'll see you later.